Okay, I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pledge of the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever so far.
Okay, welcome everyone to the November 1st meeting. No-shave-November. Okay, Commissioner Brumel will not be here today. I think she's vacationing with some family members. Well-deserved, I can say. Approval of the minutes of October 18th, do we have a motion to approve?
Some of them.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills. Do we have a motion to approve the financial report?
I'm moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I did have a question or a comment. Just gotta find it. Lou, there was a payment to Wickersham for wellhouse number four for eighty-six thousand seven, or five seventy-two. Was, it just seemed like it was a first of eight payments so late. Didn't they finish up a while ago, or was there a due diligence trip?
Wickersham hired subs that have retainage on each of those subs. Because of the long term of this project and getting it going, I authorized them to release seventy-five percent of the retainage that we have, so they could pay their subs that retain.
Okay. Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Employee of the quarter awards. Andy? Come on down. Tell us what you got.
Mayor and Commissioners, we have a presentation of employee of the quarter and service awards. If it's okay, may I announce the service awards first?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I'd like to call up CJ Bucklin. So I'm running his fifth year with the Town of Elton.
CJ, just come up here and stand.
He does, CJ.
I'm sorry. Congratulations.
Can you pull that closer to you?
Yes, sir.
Pull it closer, that way you'll be still.
Okay. I don't know if she's here, Mary. Sadie? She is not here. Honorable mention to Sadie Redd. Is it Redd? Yes, and she's celebrating ten years with the Town of Elton with Parks and Recreation. Chaney? Actually, she's been here longer than ten years. I was told this morning. But it was part-time. There's in-betweens there, but completely ten years. Celebrating ten years of park recreation. Congratulations. Detective Beamer? Twenty years. Congratulations. And a big one here. Brenda Humphries, otherwise AKA Bryn. Twenty-five years.
Shake some hands.
Mayor?
Congratulations.
Mayor, that's, standing in front of you is seventy years.
Seventy years. But listen, I got thirty more here with Charlie. I got another twenty and another twenty. We've got another seventy and eight.
All right, we'll get all together.
Seventy-six. All right. Very good. Anything else, Andy?
Yes, I'd like to make an announcement of the employee of the quarter that was selected by the committee for the third quarter. This employee has exhibited a high level of service to the employees and the public. This person consistently prioritizes the needs of the customers and the citizens and assists the coworkers when possible. An example of this is when she was working alone, left the office to take her lunch. She left the office and was about to leave the building, and she passed a citizen on the way in, realizing they were short-staffed inside, immediately turned around to take care of the customer, didn't bat an eye. This is just a small example of what she does day-to-day. She also assisted customers in administration support. There have been many instances in which administration staff was unavailable and she provided the necessary documents or information to the customer. She has always been compassionate toward customers, and I've seen her being very kind and compassionate to the other employees as well. And professional during her tenure with the Town of Elton. And that is Bryn. Bryn Ditchfield. Congratulations.
That's okay. Come on over. We'll wear a photo with you. Congratulations. Come on over. We'll get in on it. We'll put you right over here.
Okay.
Right here next to me, Charlie.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
Congratulations, Bryn.
Thank you.
We'll let you be Louis first and then...
I've watched her. She's a real asset to the community, let me tell you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Back to work. All right. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Thank you, today's charge department. Lou, you were up.
Okay, I have two proclamations here. The first one is Municipal Government Works. Read it to the record. Proclamation of Mayor and Commissioners of the Town of Elton, declaring the month of November 2023 as Municipal Government Works Month in the Town of Elton. Whereas the town is established at Cecil County Seat, it was established at Cecil County Seat, seventeen eighty-seven, has evolved to Cecil County's largest and most progressive municipality. Whereas Elton, joined a hundred and fifty-six other municipalities in the realm, proudly serve their respective residences and business communities. And whereas municipal government represents the most responsive level of government, allowing citizens direct access to their elected officials, observe the operations of the government, and benefit from many services provided by their government. And whereas in an effort to educate citizens about municipal government and the importance of their participation, Town of Elton is proud to promote municipal governance fairness. And whereas municipalities have enhanced the quality of life for their respective residents by providing essential government services, maintaining access to safe drinking water, and providing wasteful treatment, maintaining parks and supporting recreational activities, promoting economic development and job opportunities, and supporting local businesses, along with providing many other services and opportunities that make Elton a great place to live or to enjoy. Now therefore, being proclaimed that the Mayor and Commissioner of the Town of Elton hereby proclaim the month of November 2023 as Municipal Government Works Month in the Town of Elton.
We have a motion to accept proclamation P-56-2023 Municipal Government Works Month.
Still moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So I could bring to a lot of proclamations in that. Here's Elton. This one is Small Business Saturday. The proclamation of Mayor and Commissioner of the Town of Elton declaring November 25, 2023, Small Business Saturday in Elton. Whereas according to United States Small Business Administration, approximately thirty-two million small businesses in the United States employ nearly fifty percent of Americans' workforce. And whereas sixty-eight dollars of every hundred dollars invested in the small business stays in the community versus forty-three dollars spent in non-local establishments. And whereas the Mayor and Commissioners of the Town of Elton support local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and conserve our neighborhoods. Now therefore, being known that the Mayor and Commissioner of the Town of Elton hereby proclaim November 26, 2023...
Do we have a motion to accept?
I'm sorry.
Twenty-fifth.
November twenty-fifth, 2023.
You got it.
Small Business Saturday in the Town of Elton.
Evidently they used the proclamation from May as pure.
Yeah, you got it. So this is the correct one.
Forgive me. Go ahead and proclaim it.
Do we have a motion to proclaim P-57-2023 Small Business Saturday, November 25, 2023? We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on that proclamation? Hearing all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else, Lou?
Fortunately, not.
All right. We have a couple things. What I wanted to go over the next two months, Mayor and Commissioners meeting. Our charter states that we have to have one meeting per month, and we've always had pretty close to three meetings. For the rest of the month of November, I'm gonna ask the board to, for us not to meet again, so we won't meet on the fifteenth, or the eighth or the fifteenth of November. You guys good with that?
In other words, you're saying we won't meet again until the next person meeting in December.
That's correct. So we're gonna meet again December the sixth will be our next meeting, and at that meeting we'll have a public hearing on Resolution R-122023, which is mainly talking about the Elton Charter C-9-4 collective bargaining. We also will have the discussion on Southfields update. We'll also have the decorating contest deadline, which will be put on social media about the decorating for Christmas. Very possibly, we won't have a meeting on the thirteenth, because as of right now, we don't have anything on the agenda. But we would meet again on December twentieth to talk about the, the main thing is the paying of the bills and decorating contest winners will be announced.
So what are your next dates now? November is done.
November's done, December sixth.
Oh, when you said the twentieth.
Yeah, so there was nothing on a workshop as of right now for the thirteenth. But if something comes up, we will meet on the thirteenth. But as of right now, there's not a thirteenth meeting, and there'll be one on the twentieth. All right. I wanted to make everyone aware. I attended the Five Star Event in Fair Hill. I think we all made it up there, and it was, if you had an opportunity to watch or even visit the Five Star Event in Fair Hill, it was a wonderful event. It was televised on MPT, the Maryland Public Television Channel. I actually was right at one jump for several hours, and when I got home, I got to see the rest of the event, because they show how they were running around. So it's actually, it was kinda cool to watch it on television after you were sitting in one area. We have, the Halloween Parade was probably one of the finest that I've seen. I think that the idea of giving candy on Main Street really has helped with the crowd, bringing more kids in into our community, and it was a wonderful, wonderful event. I really wish that more people would join the parade, per se, and maybe come up with some more creative costumes. I thought some of the, some of the costumes and the events were great, but then there were some that was just bland, I guess. But hey, listen, we all have our own little pet peeves, but it was a wonderful event. The Halloween Parade was fantastic. Trick-or-treaters last night. I had nineteen come to the alt house. Normally, I would say that we had between eighty and ninety people. And after it was all said and done, I'm trying to real, trying to figure out, well, maybe because we had such a successful Halloween Parade, and we've had multiple, what they call trunk-or-treats, we've had multiple trunk-or-treats, which I love, that may, we may be losing some of the kids out walking the streets of the neighborhoods, which I, I wish that they could experience the trick-or-treat thing, but I think the trunk-or-treat thing might be the way of the future. I really do. I think that might be something that, I know as a parent today, I would probably like the more control where my kids may be going into a smaller circle. And you could get as much candy as you did walking two miles of the street, right?
And you know where the candy's coming from.
You know where it's coming from. So, you know, mentioning, just a quick comment. I know that we, we shut down the Neighborhood Community Center last night for trick-or-treating, but maybe that might be a spot that we do a trunk-or-treat next year at that community center and direct more people into that area. Just a thought.
And I would say so, because the community center should not have been cut down, but anyhow, I agree with you.
Might be, maybe how we can use that tool.
I can pretty much guarantee next Halloween at the Neighborhood Community Center, there will be a big Halloween event.
I think it'd be...
I kinda got that message, so.
It'd be kind of cool. So on next Wednesday, we don't have a town meeting, but a representative from Senator Carden's office is coming down, gonna visit us here at Elton, so if anyone wants to be here at 1:30, you're certainly welcome. One thing that I had spoke to the representative about is our trail systems throughout the, out to Town of Elton in the community, but what got this started was they're looking at doing another Ben Carden Trail on the south side of Chesapeake City. And you currently have the Ben Carden Trail, which is on the north side of Chesapeake City along the levee, and, and I'd like to see the trail, a trail from Elton connect to the Ben Carden Trail in Chesapeake City. And I believe with, if you, if you look at the, the area as a bird flies, I believe with the county owning the old Brantwood Park, there'd probably be one or two easements they'd have to get around down in the lower part where Sarge's Market is, but as soon as you hit into the Southfields area, we could get an easement going right through the Southfields property all the way to downtown Elton. We've already got that trail. We already own the land around behind Elkwood Estates. So I think that that's one thing I just wanted to talk to them about, but how neat would that be, you know? I told her we'll call it Carden Trail North. So we'll see how that flies. Dan, I know you're gonna be sending a note out in regards to turkeys and hams, right?
Yeah.
Is that normally for, do we do that for Thanksgiving or Christmas?
Christmas.
Okay, so we got some time. I was thinking that was for, for Thanksgiving, and we weren't gonna meet. So that'd be good. That'd be for the, the Christmas holiday, so we'll be meeting, and you'll be sending them out, but consider just start the planning.
You'll get them probably the twentieth, probably your last meeting.
Okay, very good. Today is the first day of Republic Trash Collection, and I know we have Dominic here also. If, if anyone from the board has any, wanna fire off any questions to Dan or to Dominic or Brian, the day's the first day. I guess there was one question that we do have.
Can I speak for you?
Sure.
We saw, we have a list of where Republic is gonna be for the next, every day of the week. I was taken a little bit back to understand that they were in an area that they weren't supposed, well, not the weren't supposed to be in, but they were in an area that we weren't planning to be at today. Can you explain that to us, maybe?
You wanna?
Yeah.
Yeah, so basically, that's a result of the collection from yesterday with Waste Management. There was quite a few skips. I think most of it was from the recycle. So basically, Republic was kinda helping clean up that, that. So that's where, that's where they were. It was probably in, one of the areas was probably in, around Elton Heights, I believe. Some of them were coming by and, you know, helping, helping, you know, clean out the messes.
Well, listen, we, we're getting off on the right foot. I mean, thank you for doing that, but the bad side of that is, is we, we have, it happened to be the Commissioner's house, that they, they pooled both Republic containers, the recycle and the trash, and they put it in the same truck.
Mind you, I spent the week carefully separating my recyclables from my regular trash. Wanted to watch the guy pull up this morning and dump both cans into the same truck. I think we're right back where we were with Waste Management.
Well, yeah, unfortunately, because the, you know, the, the end of Waste Management contract yesterday, they had, you know, they had a large amount of misses, you know, within yesterday's route.
But shouldn't they have just picked up one or the other, and not both in the same trash truck?
Yeah, there was, unfortunately, unfortunately, we would never be able to get it off the streets. So, you know, going forward, obviously, that's not a Republic policy to do that. They, again, never trying to assist us to get, to get everything cleaned up.
Appreciate that.
You know, all alone, we have, you know, Tracy gets a million calls on this. Her phone was ringing off the hook because of this. And, you know, we wanted to help, one, help them get started off cleaners, and it also helps us, because, you know, unfortunately, we were left with all that from Waste Management. So it's really not a, it is not a Republic issue. They were actually trying to help us.
I think the concern was, I don't wanna speak out of turn, but I think the concern was that there would be longer than a week for houses sitting with trash, with the way the schedule changed. Work with Waste Management. So you'd have some section, maybe like nine days or ten days. So these guys basically kind of fussed through that and said, hey, can you go to XYZ and make sure that they're not sitting for ten days?
All right. So from here on out?
Or get picked up suddenly.
Yeah.
Very good.
Very good. The last...
I'm not gonna start out so nice. I've got six people I work with, and it's been a nightmare transitioning from one to the other, and I know you guys are supposed to start on the first.
Today?
Yes.
It's town, it's... We got a statement.
Hold on, let me, you can do your statement, but I'm, I'm still frustrated from, from all the things that we heard from the last meeting. So I wrote down things that were given to us.
You want him to go ahead and speak?
No, I'm, I'm listening to it afterward, because I, I also did it at one, thinking about it.
Yep.
I've already, everybody already heard the sixteenth, we're supposed to have flyers. I already, I know everybody's, know that we barked about the flyers that we didn't get on the sixteenth. Like we said at the meeting, we asked specifically, are we sure we're gonna have the flyers out on the sixteenth? You're aware of that, right? We were supposed to have flyers to the residents to know exactly what's gonna happen on the twenty-third or after the twenty-third, when the totes were supposed to been given out.
The flyers were delivered throughout the town.
Throughout or some?
Throughout.
Okay, well, I never got one until the twenty-fourth. That's why I happened, because I called the day before, and then all of a sudden, I got one the next day. After I asked about the totes that were supposed to be on the twenty-third, started to distribute out, but when you guys explained in here, the guys didn't say portion of the town was gonna get to twenty-third. You said they were, they were gonna be distributed out on the twenty-third, but...
That's not what we said. We said it would be throughout the week. I can go back and show you.
Okay, so I guess I wasn't clear with what you guys said, then. But I was a little upset, because there was people come confront me about things I didn't have any answer for. So as, one thing that I will say that has been a nightmare for people, the ones that don't wanna recycle, we all had the cans, the two cans that we promised to, was the one recycled, one that was regularly trashed, I think. And after looking at it, it makes sense for ones that didn't want to recycle, not to give it to them, because it's just gonna be sitting in the way, a waste of money and a waste of our time distributing. So I'm just saying what was given to me. So I think we need to revisit that, and ones that don't want it, go back and get those cans. If it'd been best to give us both two cans, then we're gonna put trash in, they would use that a little better. That's, that's one thing I wanted to make clear. So, okay. I was a little frustrated, because we, we're not the trash collectors, or we're not the trash people in the business, but we're getting all the heat. Then, and I'm telling you right now, what you said to us in here, we got everything ready to go, and it was, it was a total chaos when, when you said that, because honestly, I don't even wanna say what I felt that day.
I would, I think Commissioner Piner has a good point. Maybe we can ask people if they don't wanna recycle, we'll pick up those recyclable cans. I think that would be pretty simple to do at this point. But I also understand, when we did it, you don't know who's gonna recycle and who's not gonna recycle.
Exactly.
We recognize that. So now we could go back and see, maybe we'll put a statement out. If you, if you're not gonna recycle, we'll take the can back. You can store the can wherever it may be. Now, I will, I will mention that I was probably one of the fortunate ones, that I did receive a mailer. I received the door hanger, and I received the literature in my trash can. And I, I understand Commissioner Piner's frustration, because I, I had my neighbor came over, and he didn't receive, I think he received the mailer, but he didn't receive one or the other. There was a little confusion. Our street wasn't listed on the paperwork. Hermitage Drive wasn't listed, but we assumed that we were part of Friendship Heights. But normally, Hermitage was always listed a little separate, but I, those are easy to address. Now, there was a lady at the post office today on Mensing Lane. She said she never received any form of information to me, and I asked her again. I said, are you sure you didn't receive a mailer? You didn't receive a door hanger, and that you didn't receive anything in your container? So it was hard for me, so I don't know. I, I don't know if anything's possible, but hopefully, as we, we've done to roll out, today's our first day, right, and fingers crossed. But Dan, go ahead. You had, you had some information you wanted to share with us on the flyer from Brian.
So I'm gonna get it right here real quick. So, okay, so as we all know, just kind of talked about that. Today, November first, starts the new trash, the trash collection of, with Republic Services. They'll be providing all those services, the trash, as well as the recycling. And then just kind of going back on some of the things that were done, door hangers were handed out, residents during, to the residents during the week of October sixteenth, indicating these changes were coming. And then during the week of October twenty-third is when the totes were, we were beginning to deliver those. Actually, the contractor for Republic delivered over ninety-four-hundred totes throughout a five-day period, so they finished that Fri, last Friday. The new website will be available. I think that's up in now, is that, is that right? Yeah, also, in addition to that, you can go onto Town's website, the schedule's on there, and then the information pertaining to recycling and all that. The Department's Public Works was able to reach out and provide information regarding the trash service transfer to the following HOA's, Patriots Glen, Meadows of Elk Creek, Washington Woods, Kensington Courts, South Stream, and Hollingsworth Manor. DPW also utilized our message board, you know, throughout the weekend, and I think we did that prior to that as well. We also created yard signs and tried to strategically place those in...
Great move.
Yeah, in some of the, you know, the in and out of some neighborhoods wherever possible, you know, to notify, to kind of try to drive the residents to the website for more detailed information. The transition to the new modernized... The transition to the new modernized, modernized collection system, including the deployment of over 9,400 totes, was completed in less than eight weeks. This deployment of the trash cans was faced multifaceted approach between various different departments of the town of Elton. You know, we'd like to thank the Finance Department, Building and Zoning Department, especially Kathleen and Michelle for the receipt of all the phone calls and trying to disseminate their information out. As, you know, as for DPW, special recognition goes out to Brittany even manufactured the yard signs, and then Tracy Gaddy, of course, who probably spoke to at least 25% of residents. And, you know, the phone, you know, I watched it nonstop. I tried to talk to her the one day about something pertaining to trash, and I gave up because it was, the phone wouldn't stop ringing. So a lot of phone calls, you know, and, you know, a lot of information going out, you know, was a, a huge project, you know, for all of us. DPW and Republic Services is asking the residents and the board just to let the trash services be fully implemented for about 90 days before we do any kind of alterations to, you know, the current service. You know, basically to summarize the previous trash collection model at the town of Elton, experience, the experience was not sustainable. The new trash collection model has been implemented based on experience from the industry experts, many different, you know, trash companies and other information. We feel that the partnership with Republic Services will provide us successful solutions for many years to come. So, you know, long and short, you know, as far as the way that we had done trash in the past, you know, for a long time with waste management, as we know, you know, things are changing, you know, the automation of the trash collection, which, you know, for one, with the side loaders, it keeps the, you know, the, the people that are collecting the trash safe, and then hopefully ultimately will stabilize the, you know, the cost of collection. You know, I know, and I can't, Dominic can probably speak better to this than I can, but as far as workman's comp and those kind of things, it's a big thing anywhere with the trash collection.
Brian, so we have old waste management cans, they're labeled pickup.
Right.
How do we get Public Works or the contractor to pick these containers up?
So we, we have started some of that, and I know I passed through your road today. There's a bunch of them on there that are clearly have the pick me up on there or whatever. So we're going to, we're, we've been doing that. We've also, you know, been working on some adjustments with the trash cans, the current cans, but yeah, we're, we're doing that now. It's, you know, there's a good bit out there, but yeah, we're, we're doing it now.
So are we, what are we going to do with all those containers once you get them?
So, some of them, the old waste management cans, Tracy had contacted a smaller company, they're going around collecting a lot of them for us. They're, they're actually, while they're out there, they're pulling a lot of the non-branded, you know, just the wherever people go from home, what age, those, they won't be doing anything with, or taking them to a sewer plant, we'll dispose of them. A lot of the branded, that they can melt down, and they'll end up reusing them. So yeah, most of the, you know, the unbranded, they'll, we'll have to dispose of them.
All right, any, how did you have another question?
Yeah, any flyer, just want to clarify. In this flyer, on the last page, it says, what can I put in my trash cart? The 95 gallon trash cart is for all the, your bagged household trash. Please bag loose items to prevent littering. Many people think that you've got to bag everything that goes in a can.
Ultimately, and, you know, Dominic can probably help me out with this one a little bit, but ultimately, you know, that's, that's in there, trying to, you know, keep things from blowing out and around, so, you know, an investigation area.
Yeah, that's all that is. That's just a kind of careful wording.
Okay.
You can throw in whatever you like, it's just a matter of-
Again, it's perception from people coming to me about this, I'm not bagging everything because sometimes, oh, I mean, that's what they tell me.
Sure.
They open the can and throw it in, open the can and throw it in. But they're, reading this, it's got to be bagged and put in that tote, that's the way it reads.
Yeah, I understand. They totally know it.
All right, so I just want to make sure that's clear, that anything going there is-
Hundred percent.
Anyone else have anything about?
About the trash?
Yeah.
I think we all spoke well. I know, we sit in here, I know it didn't go well at the beginning, but at this point, I support you. If I had a question, and if I could always call Dan, he gets back, and he explained everything the way it was supposed to be, but any new project, any new thing sometime that you put forth, it's going to have its hiccups. I think you all had yours. Hopefully, we can right the ship and come sit, and come back and sell.
And I, and I do have one more point of clarification. So I reviewed, we, we had sent out prior to making the award, and Dominic, I'm not looking at you, I'm looking at our staff. Prior to making our award, you sent out to an engineering firm to give a recommendation on, based on points, to go with, and Republic was hands down the better choice for the, for the town of Elton, no question about that. There was a part in there that I'm, I'm really, really confused about, and I know it's too late now, but I, the reason why I'm coming back to it, is we were here in the meeting, and we were talking about additional carts. And the additional carts, I, I had asked, and I think Gene Brumel had asked, and we were under the understanding that if a customer, one of our residents wanted an additional can, then it was a $14.95 one-time fee. My understanding today is, it's $14.95 per month fee. What is the answer? I just need to know the answer. Is there an answer?
Yes, it's fourteen, it's a monthly, as in the contract.
That wasn't said that.
Okay.
I'm not sure what they said, but that's what-
So, where I, I guess I'm going, now I want to go back to that engineering firm, and this is why I, I wanted to clarify this, because as I'm reading the recommendations from the, the firm, one, what, Republic was the lowest at $14.95. The second bid was at $24.95 or something like that, but the other one was at $95. So I guess where I'm getting at, so the other company was going to charge $95 per month for an additional cart. You see where I'm at? So I think that there was a, not only were we-
I believe they would have charged $95 plus the service. The service was the other thing, that's, that's-
So we didn't see the service cost of it. And now, once again, I don't think it's a big deal. I don't, listen, those containers are big. And if anyone's providing, if anyone's putting more trash in that container than, than what that container brings, then no wonder we have so much trash in the town of Elton. Because mine, I can tell you, in my 96 gallon cart, yesterday, when I threw out, I had one bag. My recyclables were overfilling, right? So I, I just can't see people really needing a second container unless, I mean, I only know what the unless would be, unless they're, they've got one heck of a household.
Yeah, yeah. The only thing with, the clarity on this is, when, I remember Pat, oh, oh, Pat, oh, she asked that question distinctly about that one-time fee, if she needed a cart, I mean, another tote, how much would it cost? And it was $14, and that was it. Does Mark, does a baker, sit back there, and the same answer was given. Now, we all can't read the contract the wrong way, but I know that's what was said. Am I right, Brian? That was said that day, about one-time fee, $14.
That in minutes.
Do you remember?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't recall exactly, but-
Hours. I mean, I can't, I, I can't say I was asleep that day, but I know for sure.
It was definitely, I said one-time fee, and it was addressed to us one-time fee. But listen, that's water under the bridge, per se. Let's see how many people it affects through the, through the community. I believe it's going to be very, very little, but at least we, I have an answer now. I was telling, I was telling some of the residents incorrectly.
Sure.
And, you know, I'll apologize to whatever residents I spoke to, but I told them a $14.95 one-time fee, and it's a $14.95 per month fee. So as long as we're all on the same page, giving out the same information from here on out, and then we're fine.
We're on the same page now, but it was distinctly mentioned in there, the price of the can, I guess. And I heard the same, and it was one time, but come the follow afterwards, it was different. So, we can solve that.
We can look it up in a minute and see what was said. You know, we'll have to watch a videotape.
That's, 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 that's good, but that's not important. Important right now is just what is the exact words to be stated.
That's correct.
That is correct.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you.
Hang in there.
90 days, we're, we're giving 90 days, see where we're at. I think it's going to be fine. Earl, do you have anything today for the good of the town?
I think we only got 19, because on last Thursday, or was it Friday? I can't remember. They had the trunk or treat at Gelpin Manor, and then across the street, they had a Timmy Fire Company. There was a massive amount of people.
Yes.
They had crossing guards and everything out there, and it went very, very, very well. So what did you do with the rest of the candy you had?
I've got, I can tell you, I've got 81, 79, 79 large pieces of candy.
Okay. Halloween parade, it, it, it was good, I really enjoyed that. It's a nice night for it, and for once you can stand on the side, and people throwing candy at you, and you run it out there picking it up. But it was good. And Chief, the, the truck is down in the same spot, and we're going to park it out again.
He painted it. He was out there painting it.
Thanks, I'm done.
I wanted to mention one thing, that the, Chief, you'll be going to the first responders' dinner?
Yes, I will. We have three officers that have been, are going to be recognized. Senior Officer Brian David, who's with our Support Services Division, and then we have Sergeant Dennis Losasa, who's with our Special Operations, and then Grant Demond, who was with Control last year.
Very good. Commissioner Mastman, who said he was going, if anyone else from the board wants to go, it's next Thursday night, November 9th, at the Great Wolf Lodge. It, it has so much of a crowd, they had to move the venue, right? So it's at the Great Wolf Lodge, so if it's something you want to attend. Rob Muller's going to get us the names of everyone that we can recognize. Michelle, we're going to have you doing a lot of typing, but we'll get them filled out, and either Rob or the Chief will take them down with them.
Yeah.
Fantastic. Earl, you have anything? Robert?
I would just like to reiterate that the Halloween parade was a great success. You know, for several years, I was going to judges, and this year, I moved over to NC, and it was very well organized, great job in the alliance. It was very well organized, much easier for the judges to see what was going on. I really look forward to next year. It followed on the heels of a very successful Fall Fest, so great job. I did see online several people talking about how trunk or treat, take this for what it's worth, this is not my opinion, a lot of people were saying trunk or treat is the reason we're having such a light Halloween.
I think so.
I thought I'd bring that up on behalf of the people that are complaining about it. I don't know if we want to cancel that, because it's still a great idea for some people. I have mentioned in the past, and this, this suggestion has always fallen flat and been shot right down. I would like to see Halloween done in the daytime, and for an extra hour. I would like to see three hours instead of two. And in the daytime, it's safer, you can enjoy the costumes better. I would like to see it on a Saturday, where the kids don't have school the next day, parents don't have work the next day. Again, for what it's worth, I'd like to put that out there and see if we can't do that.
But who would be doing that? The municipalities, or who? Are you just making that, you'd like to see Halloween activity that's not going to that?
I would like to see it done during the day.
We currently follow what the county sets forth on Halloween dates, and, but I think that that would be a suggestion we could make to the county if we want to, I, I think, or we have our own separate time, but I think that that would cause possibly some confusion. But we could do the, the trunk or treat maybe on that Saturday, and then they could still do their county-wide, but I like the idea. I, I like where you're going at with that. Listen, today, things are changing right now. I mean, last night in Delaware, there was a, as crazy as it sounds, there was a shooting in Delaware for over, I, I don't know when it was over. Trick or treat, it was on Santa, it's not far from here, it was seven miles from us.
Yeah, right near, that could happen anywhere.
Yeah, I think there was three people shot, so I don't know if it was, I, I don't know when it was over.
But in this day and age, with adults running around, and costumes and masks, I would really like to see it done in the daytime.
I think it's a good idea.
I'd like to see the parade done in the daytime.
You'd have to have it on the 26th of October, for that, that's Saturday in 2024. Saturday would be a 26th. I, you know, I think, well, I'll bring it up to the, I'll send an email over to the county executive, and see, she'll probably get the same feedback, maybe there wasn't a lot of traffic. As I said, I like the trunk or treats, and maybe-
I think it's a fine idea, if it's killing traditional trick or treating, and a lot of the adults look forward to that.
Yeah.
And I know the kids like it when they get out there. I do, too. The only other thing I have today, Commissioner Brumel asked me to bring up the subject of the town brochure, and see if we can't get that rolling.
I, I'm okay with it.
You guys okay with it?
I sent in the affirmative.
Lou, let's get moving on the brochure again, Mary, let's get rolling on it, get it to all the department heads, see if there's any changes we need to make to it. I think it's very important to get the new information about the trash collection in that brochure, and we'll get it out there again. I, I know it's a, an expense, but it's a, it's a, a great tool. I think you'd, you'd be handling it, but could you put your spring events in it right now, too?
So what I want to do, because we're not going to do it regularly, is just put general information about everything that we have, and then away from them to either, you know, they can contact us when it's that time of year, or they can go onto our website and pull up some information when it comes up.
Perfect. Yeah, let's get it rolling. Anything else?
That's it.
One last thing, Alicia, I sent, I put you in contact with Vince-
Yeah.
-from Chesapeake Utilities.
I had a call this morning with him and his, the person that-
Perfect. I thought it was great, Chesapeake Utilities reached out, and they said, based on their agreement with the town, they have to do a lot of service hours, and this year, they were, kind of got behind the eight ball, and they offered to step up, hopefully, hopefully-
They will. I put them in touch with the help center, so they also have a commitment to take 10 of the people over there in November to help with the help center as well.
Perfect. Well, this is the time, we open up the floor for anyone in, in the audience that has anything to say.
Did I make one comment before?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you've noticed it or not, but the sidewalk and pedestrian bridge project on Meron 7 will be, is beginning.
I saw the truck out there.
Kinsley is the contractor, and you'll start to see a lot of construction activity very shortly.
And that's the bridge?
Yeah. Initially, it's a sidewalk, the bridge is, believe it or not, has yet to be designed, but they have the head walls and everything to do, so there will be a lot of activity there.
Well, listen, it's a wind if there's a sidewalk. Right now, there's a sidewalk.
Have all, the sidewalks, it'll all go down through there.
That's a wind. May not need a bridge if there's a wind, a, a huge sidewalk. Anyone else? Yes, Chief?
So I just had a couple of things I wanted to mention. The training derailment exercise is tomorrow at Perryville Fire Company from 4:30 to 9:00. I know me and at least one commander plan to attend. We also had Hogs for Heroes donate a vest for K9 Drax. About $1,900, and they're going to do a presentation to him tomorrow night at Rising Sun Fire Company.
Oh, nice.
So it was really nice. They, they purchased it and everything, and they're going to have to give it to them.
Can you draw up a thank you letter or something?
Absolutely. Yep. And then we, the agency is going, having a meeting with the hotel- And then we, the agency is going, having a meeting with the hotel, motel owners in town, and we're gonna do that on Friday the 17th in here. We've gotten, you know, with the long-term stays and just the way they change business, we've gotten some clarification from State's Attorney's Office on how they're gonna look, view that, because I had some officers saying, well, after 30 days, you establish residency, and I had others like, no, you want to leave now, so we've got clarification from State's Attorney's Office on how they'll handle what's appropriate, and then we've looked at some of the laws for just the innkeepers. So, we're gonna educate them, we could have a supervisory team this one to make sure all of our officers are with them, but just trying to be a little bit proactive. We do want to talk about Thompsons, that they're having with the towns, but it's a good, a good opportunity to just kind of reach out. I saw the email that was sent out, but I just wanted to let you know, we will be proactive on that. And Lieutenant Converg has reached out to Thompsons Elementary School, we're hoping that they will allow us, and they will, but we just haven't scheduled a time, but to host a meeting for Stanford Drive residents. But there has been, we did have some activity out in East Village, where we did a search one out there, and then a juvenile was actually charged in the shooting at Oak Hill 6, and charged as an adult, so, just to give you a little bit of an update on that.
Listen, I, I really appreciate you taking it and being more proactive with that. You know, I do a lot of traveling, and I will tell you that when you want to go to a hotel, I think we've all experienced this, we want to make sure that we're going to a hotel that's reputable. And, and in my opinion, I think we have three in our town, that if I have friends coming into town, I cannot have them go to. And, and there's just too much bad things that happen. And if I can make that meeting, I'm gonna make that meeting, and I'd like to tell them that. I mean, it's, they gotta, they gotta get in gear here, or you either gotta get going or get going.
Well, it's Friday the 17th of the morning, I think it's 9 o'clock, but I can confirm that.
Okay.
They've started responding, they sent the letters out last Friday, they started our receiving. If they don't, if we haven't heard from them from Monday, we'll send somebody out personally to buy them, give them the letter, and they'll-
Perfect.
When was did they get them?
November 17th. Thank you so much.
The other issue that you had brought up was where there's a boat out off of-
Yes, yes.
Elkwood Estate. It is a sailboat, and when I sent Devine out there, because he's usually up on those and keeps checking the areas, it was not, it was not docked anywhere on shore. DNR was contacted, and they said that because it didn't have a motor, is that motorized? That they don't get involved. So, we're just gonna keep checking and making sure that we don't find it tied up on, on any property around there, and that there's no other, because there's been times that we've seen where they bought personal property on, you know, on town property or something, so we'll address that if that happens, but we haven't seen that yet.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that. Anyone have any? Yes, Leisha?
Two things. Mary, first, as you're doing your document, if there's an opportunity to put the Elton Alliance events in, just let me know deadlines, and I'd be happy to- Mayor, in light of your announcement of no more meetings for the rest of the month, I wanted to bring attention to First Friday in December, which is the tree lighting at North and Main, right in front of the Alliance building. We'll have Mr. and Mrs. Pauls there, we will have the carpenter there, the ones that played at the Memorial Day Parade, and we are also doing a fill-a-cot car for collecting toys for children that are specifically in the town of Elton. The Elton Alliance supports the Toys for Cots event as well, but that, what we do on that first Friday will be specifically distributed to kids in the Elton area.
Perfect. Anyone else have anything to say for the good of the town? Mr. Muller?
So, after November, so our monthly report from the Fire Department, following on the first day of the month, our statistician hasn't called up to us, but rest assured, it was another very busy month. But there are a number of events that are coming up. I did want to acknowledge, you did talk about the trunk or treats. Overwhelming turnout, again, this year, even bigger than last year, put together with the Elton Manor group, the fire police were out there doing the job, keeping everybody-
Would you say there were a thousand people?
At least. I mean, the traffic, I mean, when I got here, to put my kids in line, we lined up at the library.
Wow.
So, and we got here 10 minutes after 6:00, and it started at 6:00. So, it was that long. But this year, we did have an inclusion of a lot of area businesses, both chamber crunners from the county, as well as Elton Alliance businesses, that did costumes, trunk or treat, handed out candy, and it was very, very successful, very well received, and a lot of police agencies were there, Elton Police, Maryland State Police, Lot Marshall's office, so we're excited and already planning for next year for people to even bigger.
Plus, you have the video, I believe, we had the video.
Yep, yep. Signboard, and we had a Halloween movie screen show, and we'd keep people entertained while they were waiting, so it was a very, very good turnout. It was also the end of Fire Prevention Month, so October is National Fire Prevention Month. We saw all of our schools in our district, as well as private schools, daycares, some also came to the firehouse and did tours and things. So, for us, fire prevention usually spills over into November, but another very busy month. Usually, we see around 6,000 children in line in October, talking about health and safety and fire prevention, kind of loop them all together since we have the audience, but another busy month. Coming up, different activities that we have going on. First, as Mayor mentioned, the first responders appreciation dinner on the 9th, so look forward to seeing everyone there. November the 11th is our open house at our station right here on Newark Avenue. There'll be food, displays, demonstrations, kids, lots of activities, fire prevention games, as well as anyone who's interested in just taking a tour, take a look at the firehouse, learn about what we do, or if they're interested in volunteering, we'll have people there do applications and talk about things.
The hours for that?
It'll be from 1:00 to 4:00.
That's November the 11th?
Yes, sir. Basic weekend for us, because the very next day is our annual Fall Craft Show, so that's November the 12th, from 9:00 to 4:00. We are packed again this year, there were 200 different vendors.
Wow.
In our main hall, small hall, and I think they're using the engine bay again. So, there is no cost to get in. There'll be a booth there, so if you want to put some cash in there for a donation to the firehouse, you're welcome, but there's no admission fee.
And the time?
From 9:00 to 4:00. We have also been in contact with the North Pole, although it's a little early. We'll be putting together with them, with Santa, we're on the list of neighborhoods that we're gonna visit with them as well, coming off after Thanksgiving through the December season. Other than that, you guys have any questions for the fire company, anything going on you want to talk about? All's good. And just like the last November meetings, I know the last two years, we did move our annual intercreation to the fall, so it ended our calendar year. I don't know if there's anything special you needed from us to push that ball down the road, or, all right.
How's the summer, the flea market been? You still doing what's on?
So, the flea market, I think, I think the numbers are pretty stagnant, and it hasn't grown, but also hasn't fallen off to be, you know, there's still some income coming from there. All right. How you doing?
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Anyone on the World Wide Web Zoom meeting? Okay, well, listen, Happy Thanksgiving, since we won't see anyone, and from the commissioners and the mayor, enjoy that turkey. Meeting adjourned.